Oh, that's pretty good coffee.
Yeah, man.
The Mexican coffee?
Is it? God, this thing is on. We're hot. It's one thirty.
You ready?
Yep.
One thirty.
Alright. Alright, I'll go ahead and call the Infrastructure Committee meeting of October the twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five to order. We will not be taking any public comment today. This is just basically going over some of the infrastructure needs and stuff that is going on within the city of Bossier. So, nothing will be voted on here today. Any ideas or anything that want to recommendations to move forward will will be taken and then be brought to the entire council and administration. So, do you want to read the agenda or do you want to just? Will you just start?
Yeah, just start.
Okay. Alright, first, I'm out of my business today will be the will be going over capital outlay grants and discussion. We've thought we were gonna have our state legislators here with us today, but they have been called to Baton Rouge for a special session. So, we have spoken with most of them today on the phone. So, Ms. Nottingham. Just kind of going over the proposals that will be going to down to Baton Rouge for our capital outlay. Is there anything special that we need to talk about or?
So, projects number one and two, we did receive funds for, but we have to continue to submit those until we get fully funded and the project is complete. So, but those two have received funding. We did add Hamilton Road. I know that has been a big discussion. And so, we've added that.
Can we stop right there real quick on the Hamilton Road? Councilman Cochran, you had some questions on that?
On the Hamilton Road, I'd hate for us to get get down the road where we're we're ahead of we got the cart before the horse, so to say. Have we talked to the railroad any any way to know if we got wide enough area to cover what we want to do with Hamilton Road?
Have we had discussions with?
Yeah.
No.
I'd hate for us to get going, get moving, and the railway, you know, the railroad should cut us off or make us change our plans or whatnot. And then we're in a situation that could possibly cause maybe like a shed road experience again. I don't want us to get there.
Sure. A lot of times what they will do is they will fund maybe ten percent for design work in that in the current year. And so, then that allows us an opportunity. We can always modify, but that gets the project going and kind of starts those conversations. And then these won't be funded until the upcoming legislative session, which will be in the spring of two thousand twenty six. And so, that is for their fiscal year that starts on July first. And so, we're really looking not quite a full year away, but these dollars would not be recognized or they wouldn't come to us until at least third quarter of two thousand twenty six.
Do y'all, the administration, do y'all think this is a project that can wait that long?
So, we have had internal conversations about funding mechanisms to go ahead and get this started. And and that's something that I think we intend to bring before council, but we always want to seek every avenue possible in case we are able to expand or widen. So, we can possibly do more if we combine our funds with state funds.
Yeah, I know. I'd I'd already talked to Andy about us getting a a current traffic study done on that. Granted, there is a lot more traffic on that road right now with the Benton Road overpass being closed. So, once that's open, I feel like the traffic may die down some, but the people going to North Bossier are still gonna take that corridor. The people coming from North Bossier to South Bossier just to avoid getting caught by a train.
Yes, absolutely.
So, I still think that that is gonna be one of our busiest traveled corridors back and forth. And the and the road is the road is bad. I mean, it's it's been bad for twenty years or thirty years.
Funding to do some panel repairs here and there, but yes, it is. We all recognize it's time for a complete overhaul.
Think you can still see the wagon tracks in that road.
You can feel them.
Do you remember that?
Yeah, I was there.
Okay. Um, okay. Alright. This is this is one I kind of had a question about this Viking Drive improvements.
So, this would be really more making a expanding the east-west corridor. And so, that's what we're looking at. It would be five lanes with a shoulder currently. There's two lanes, a turn lane. So, it's three lanes total, but there is no shoulder. And so, this would, we think, be a tremendous enhancement as we are seeking alternate east-west corridors to relieve congestion off of Airline Drive and Benton Road. And so, that would connect to the industrial extension of Viking Drive as well as Swan Lake Road, which Veterans Parkway is now created, I think, a heavier use all the way to Highway eighty.
Do do we, the city, do we own any property along Viking Drive?
I.
That you know of?
I don't know.
Or does the parish own any?
I am not aware. And I think this project has been one that DOTD has had in their queue, I guess. And based on our conversations, we met with Senator Bass this morning, I think that may be one that they have not wanted to move forward on because there is a tremendous amount of property acquisition.
Okay. Alright.
And then we have Airline Drive improvements between Bean Boulevard and Viking Drive. And so, this is going to do more with, is this the is this the striping? I'm sorry. I'm looking. This is not the striping. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm gonna let Andy come up. We've we have talked. We've got several letter so similar.
I think Ms. Amanda misspoke. Number five is the one that's been hung up with DOTD.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Viking Drive improvements would be, number four would be widening Viking Drive, like she said.
And so, the improvements between Bean Boulevard and Viking Drive, that is, I do know that that's part of where we want to plan. This is for planning and designing. I'm sorry, to ultimately move towards construction. This would address striping and signage and lighting. And so, we know that that whole section from Bean Boulevard, you know, down to Viking Drive is very chaotic at times. It is one of the intersections in the state with the highest number. I think it's the third in the state for the most fatalities. So, there are definitely, we recognize changes that need to be made. It is a state highway. But of course, we've done some projects before with Benton Road where we've sought state dollars to get those projects completed.
Okay.
And then we have the Kubota Way extension. And that is the termination. This was actually in a set of plans when they had all of the ideas for the Jimmy Davis Bridge. This was alternate access C. And this would extend Kubota Way Drive and connect it to Medical Drive, which would ultimately give another avenue to get to Highway seventy one south.
Yeah, I know this is, we've had several meetings down in South Bossier, down in my district with State Route Bamberg. And I do know that this is on the very top of his list. Without this extension to Medical Drive, it is gonna cause some major issues for us. One with the arena and two with access to Brookshire's Arena Drive for future businesses.
Yes.
I know we are having, and I'll get with you, we're having another meeting. I just got an invite from Representative Bamberg. DOTD is actually coming up here. The secretary.
Great.
Will be meeting. This will also alleviate some of the problems that we are having. Once the Jimmy Davis Bridge is project is done, you will only be able to access some of those businesses either going east or going west on Jimmy Davis without having to go down, make a U-turn, go back up to the go down, come back. I mean, it's just.
Yes.
It's a nightmare. And another thing we're trying to do is alleviate any traffic coming off and going through the subdivisions.
Right.
That that is the last thing that they want to do is start having a big influx of vehicles cutting through that way through the subdivisions. So, I'm I'm glad that this is on here because that is a a top project for Dennis Bamberg.
Yes, great. Then the remainder of the items, these are supplemental requests. So, these are not actually gonna go in capital outlay, but we are always, we always seek to provide shovel-ready projects to our legislators in the event additional funds are recognized during the legislative session. And so, those are, y'all just approved the ordinance for the improvements at Wimple Drive. So, for the traffic signal and then the intersection improvements, we got four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That didn't come through capital outlay. It came through a line item appropriation. And so, these projects reflect some of those requests. That would be similar where if additional funds become available during session, then our legisl our delegation is able to put those projects in. They say, hey, we've got a list. Bossier is ready to go with this. And and these are usually, not all of them, but most of them are on the smaller cost side. And so, we have North Gate Road at Patricia Drive intersection improvements. So, we are currently working on, we received grant funding from the Louisiana Transportation Alternatives Program through LTAP for sidewalk improvements through North Gate and Patricia. And this would update the signal there so that it would be compliant with pedestrian traffic. It would have the push button and it would have the ADA curbs. The signal, I think, would it would have the audible information for anyone for the ADA component. And then, so this would enhance that project that we we are working on already.
Let me ask you something, Amanda. Would, is this a grant that would still fund even if the work had been done?
What do you mean?
If we went ahead, if we went ahead and moved forward with with the sidewalks and stuff like that, would that be, would that grant still fund if the work had already been done?
Not on the signal improvements. If that's in the line item, then they send specific cooperative endeavor agreements that outline exactly what we what we have to do and the dates on it.
Okay.
We do have standard street improvements and that's just citywide. You know, we do look at that where there are most traffic, where the the greatest needs are. And so, those are panel replacement, striping, just general maintenance issues that we deal with on a regular basis. And then we have Bossier City striping improvements. So, this is where the thermoplastic markings are no longer reflective. And this would be based on, they would prioritize based on the condition assessments, traffic volumes, and crash history to identify the most critical needs first. And so, we've requested five hundred thousand there. And then Texas Street and Hamilton Road left turn signals. We have gotten a tremendous number of calls. It it was, there was a protected turn there. And then that was removed when they updated the signal and completed the carriageway project, much to the dismay of many who travel that route. So.
So, is that, we're talking, so the left turn is coming if you're going westbound on Hamilton Road to be a left turn going on to Hamilton Road.
Correct.
Could we also do, Councilman Cochran had brought this up about the flashing yellow turn signals that we have around town that are working out semi from from what Councilman Cochran was saying. But I totally agree, there needs to be one right there. You sit through that red light three or four times if the traffic is backed up before you're able to turn.
Yes. And it's my understanding the flashing yellow is what DOTD is moving to. That's the new standard. And so, if any new ones are installed, they would.
So, this two hundred and fifty thousand that we're asking for a supplemental request, that would cover, that would cover putting in?
The signals.
The signal.
They are working on the traffic study right now.
That'll upgrade the controller to allow it. And then it's just a matter of switching out ahead on light, so.
Can we add a left turn off of Hamilton to turn west on the Texas Street?
East.
West.
I thought they, I thought those were both protected. Are they not?
I don't think they are.
I know one, I know going south, there's a protected to turn.
I don't think there's one going.
I've got an active traffic study on that right now. So, anything that comes up in there will will be a drive.
Okay.
Andy, real quick, do you, do you have any input yet on some of the blinking yellow lights that we have? I know when I first saw one, it it kind of took me back. I didn't really realize what was happening. Then when I realized what it what it was doing, I think they're great. Maybe they're not suitable for every situation, but do we have any feedback yet on those?
Yeah, so there's an active project within DOTD right now in Bossier. And they're going around replacing some of these lights with the flashing yellow. So, actively working on that. It took a while for them to get started, but they're up and going now.
And I guess is there data to support it reduces or they are safer? Is that what you're asking?
Just if it, if it does alleviate the traffic problems that we are seeing right now, will, if we implement more of those throughout the lifespan of us changing them out, is it gonna make our traffic flow better?
Yes, I I believe so. I think Louisiana is behind the behind the times on on this technology, to be honest.
I agree. I I'm a I'm a proponent of them, the couple that we have around town. I just noticed a new one yesterday. And I like them. I think they're working out good, so.
Yeah, and they're, I think they're in the process of replacing, upgrading a lot of the signals at intersections. You you can see where they have poured the base for masked arms that I know they're in place at Airline and Viking. And you'll see the foundations that they've poured where they will upgrade those signals. And then we have Airline Drive at Green Acres Boulevard intersection improvements. And so, that has become an issue with Innovation Drive being utilized more. And so, the traffic, if you are on Green Acres Boulevard traveling east and you want to turn north onto Airline, there is no protected arrow. And there's just a constant flow of traffic of people that are coming off of Innovation going south on Airline. And so, traffic study is underway right now to assess that. And we wanted to put the funding request in. So, we'll be ahead of the game on that.
Thank you. Ms. Nottingham, I know another big one that we have gotten, you know, we have gotten feedback from Barksdale Forward. We've gotten feedback from the Chamber, other people on the overlaying of Highway seventy one from West Gate down to Sligo Road.
Okay.
Also, the intersection of West Gate going over the Shreveport-Barksdale Bridge.
Coming off of it.
Coming off of it. Coming off of it.
To go south.
I know that that was when we got an overlay from I twenty down to West Gate when we had a full-time four-star general out at Barksdale. That was one of his requests. And maybe we need him to request the overlaying further on down south because he got that done real quick from I twenty down to the entrance of Barksdale Air Force Base.
And I'll look, and and I did not grab the book. When they did the road show, we have their transportation plan. And it it gives timelines on some of these projects. And and that may be one. I'll check and see if it's in the queue for DOTD. And if so, what year they anticipate.
Okay.
Yeah, I know we've had some conversation. I've had some conversations. And I think Councilman Hammond has as well with some of our legislators that they're trying to get that into our capital outlay. But I think we need to put it on here so they will know that it's important to us as well.
Absolutely. I'll check on that.
Is there anything else?
That's it for us.
Exciting that you need to tell us or?
Not that I know of. I mean, we are still working. And like I said, y'all just approved the ordinance where we are still working through all of the agreements. Different agencies within the state handle those when we do get funding from the state. And so, it's just a little bit of a lengthy process sometimes to get all of those agreements signed. So, we did take care of the ones we have. And we're waiting on signatures from the state to finalize those. So, we're ready.
I am gonna ask Mr. Roshenbach to come up just so we can talk a little bit about. It's it's number one on our on our wish list from from the state. It's our water treatment nanofiltration. If you can just kind of update us on where we are on that.
Yes, sir. We have begun the design process to start expanding and enhancing the city's existing ozone system out there. So, that's phase one. Ozone is a is an accident. I don't know how nerdy you guys want me to get. But we need that that replaced. Basically, we have what we would call, you know, Gen one ozonation technology out at the water plant. Want to make sure that moving forward with nanofiltration, that that system was brought up to current standards and expanded to handle the needs of a nanofiltration system. So, pushing to have the design complete, probably Q one or so of of next year, and then moving that into construction shortly thereafter.
Well, this, I know we've we've gotten beat up in the press the past couple of days. Will this alleviate what we are, will we always still have to do the chlorine burn?
It'll help. I'm careful. I want to be careful to say it'll alleviate that. We we will reduce organics with the ozone system. And Bossier runs pretty low, what we would call disinfectant byproduct levels anyway. But when we swap over to a free chlorine disinfectant, those disinfectant byproducts get to where we're just, we we're either close to compliance or out of compliance. Whereas, a lot of water systems that don't have the technology that we have, they're threading that needle every day anyway. So, we're always pretty low with our disinfectant byproducts. But to swap completely over to a chlorine-only system and then dial that disinfectant back, we really need something to take the organics out of the water completely. And so, that's that's the future. It's a big investment. I'm proud that the city got a couple of million dollars. It's good to know that the state is is observing the same things we are here and supporting that. So, that's where we're at. It's a long play, but I like where the city is as it relates to the technology we're bringing in.
Still have A-plus water, correct?
Still have A-plus water, yes, sir. And I brought some information with me. I know we get chlorine complaints. I don't, you know, if we didn't have to do it, we wouldn't. But it's something that we monitor very closely. We look at the nitrification in the system. Once every two weeks, we we run a sample in there to see what's happening inside the distribution system. A lot of people think it's happening, you know, that this is all a phenomenon that occurs at the water plant. But a lot of this occurs in the distribution system. So, usually annually, we we may shift when we do a chlorine cleanse. But we're looking to see what the the levels are, these these nitrification levels are inside the water pipe, and we'll trigger a chlorine cleanse based on that. We turned the ammonia on today, and we'll be doing a flush Monday through, you know, the better part of next week, swapping everything back over to chloramines and completing the the this year's cycle of that. So, it's just something we have to do. We've been doing it since two thousand eighteen. And we're not the only system that has to do that. It's usually on surface water systems where we have high organics in our water where it's important to get that taken care of. So, we understand the chlorine smell is is not desirable, but we do monitor it daily. And it's not just us. I think people need to understand that the state's out here three days a week. They pull their own samples. So, I assure you, if there was something that that a regulatory agency wasn't pleased with, y'all would know.
Yeah. Alright, perfect. Anything else you need to update us on about?
No, sir.
Alright, thank you very much.
Let me change direction for just a minute. While you're up here, you are Andy the one. I was talking earlier, our, we've got some water lines that are in our ground that are sixty, seventy years old. Do we have the technology to determine wall thickness? Do we need to, I mean, I I I don't want us to get caught in like another nearby city. I want us to be ahead of the game and and start. If we need to start looking at what do we need to do to prepare to start replacing water lines before we start having a lot of blowouts?
We, you know, and I I'm beginning to hear this narrative a little bit. And and I'll say that our water problems are isolated to just older sections of of town. You know, there's no distinction between old and new. And we can show you that on work order reports. You'll see where our people are. And you can heat map it. And, you know, you think, well, we're tracking this stat, and we're gonna, we're gonna find where we have all of these these blowouts. And that's where we need to go and do the work. But unfortunately, you know, we have as many challenges with newer pipe as we do older pipe. A lot of that is seasonal. So, you get real dry temperatures and then wet, and the ground starts to move. And most of our repairs are focused on service lines. So, service laterals slipping or breaking, we're out there doing that. There are places like what I would call like old North Bossier, you know, Maggio's district over there is probably one that needs attention. The Waller area is another where unusually, and we we saw this probably in the seventies where the state would send communities money to put in fire protection systems. So, you'd get this brand-new, state-of-the-art PVC pipe and and fire hydrants. And you have this fire protection system in. But they wouldn't allow you to reconnect services to the new system. So, you have a fire system and a domestic system. You have two pipes. And so, we've identified some of these areas in town and and looked to moving those projects onto the capital plan to address that. That's a big need, specifically getting rid of the old infrastructure. So, we have only have one thing to maintain and connecting everybody to the new. And then the other bit being making sure that the infrastructure we have to valve down our lines is carefully maintained and replaced. So, we have a good feel for valves that need to be repaired or replaced. And we've tackled some of that. We we try to focus on the really hard ones. We, we try to focus on the really hard ones, and the really hard ones are very expensive, you know. So we, we've started at the hard, working our way to the easy, but it's always a matter of capital and how much you can get done. But those are, those would be things that I would see would be immediate. You know, as far as the, the condition of the pipe, um, you know, we're fortunate that a lot of the pipe is plastic, and ductile iron in and of itself is not terrible material. Um, and, and where we find brittle pipe, or where we think we need something more robust as far as a repair, and we have a blowout there, usually those emergency repairs that you guys are authorizing, funding for encompass a little bit more to try to give us a little bit better, um, material than put something back a lot better than just a Band-Aid out there. So, um, it is something difficult to keep up with, um, and I appreciate you bringing that up, and I'll make sure we talk to the team and start really looking at capital, and what, what would that look like long-term to make sure that some of these older communities have good infrastructure there. When the Carriageway went through Highway eighty through, through there, there was a brand-new water main that was put in. And so all of the old Bojor connecting streets that tied on to Highway eighty there, we spent a lot of energy putting in new valves and new connections on to that new main so that we have a better fighting chance if, if we get a line that busts in there. So to give you some color as to what we do, we do think about that. You know, there is some point of demarcation on those projects, but we try real hard to set up the utility to be able to respond quickly to issues and valve them down. We had the, you know, scenario down south, and, and most of our ability to respond is that our, you know, the infrastructure is well-maintained. We can shut the water off pretty quickly, and, um, once the water's off, we can go to work and get things repaired by us. But, um, it's not a, it's not so much an age thing. It's, it's, it's more, you know, getting rid of some of these weird, you know, areas that occurred that, you know, we talked about Hamilton Road a little bit, but Hamilton, right there, as you come off the interstate between Barksdale Boulevard and I twenty right in there, there's a lot of weird stuff that goes on. So like a project for us would be to really get in there, and there's no way, no one has really good X-ray vision. You can do ground penetrating radar and other things. One of those components of, hey, if we got in here and did Hamilton Road, and we started pulling panels out, we'd wanna figure out what's going on in there and get rid of some of that old stuff. Because some of the damage you're seeing out there is from public utilities and others having to get into that intersection and make repairs. There's a spaghetti of, of pipes in that area. So, you know, that's, we need the road to be improved, but there's other things that we would want to make sure we capture when we do that, so we're not having to get there, you know, tear up brand-new concrete to fix an old water line.
One of the unique situations that we could find down there, I believe we found it somewhere pretty close to there, is we actually still have some water lines coming from Shreveport that are connected in places in town, right?
There, there is a water main that comes from Shreveport that services the base. So it comes, um, over the Texas Street Bridge and runs down along Barksdale Boulevard. It's kind of a strange route, but that's where it comes, and then comes into the North Gate, not the West Gate back there. There's nothing in the city that's, there are, there are some weird customers that are connected to that line, but that line's not connected to, um, we have an interconnection vault where we can close it off, and we can supply that line with Bojor water. Um, but it, it's not, there's no direct connection from it to, to our water system. That makes sense. Not one that you wouldn't execute without a whole lot of, uh, folks on both sides of the river being aware of what's going on.
But our valve is still owned, correct, to Barksdale?
Yes, sir.
We're still supplying water?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we have the means to do the base for both, uh, the West Gate, so we put in a new connection there with a new meter, and we can come back from, um, the North Gate. The issue being that the city doesn't own the water main from basically the intersection of, what was that, Old Menden Road and, and Airline right there. From that, all the way down North Gate, that's, that's the City of Shreveport line.
Um, one question, when we were talking to Senator Bass earlier, have we ever gotten a Water Sector grant that you know of?
We, yes, um, we, we have, we, uh, the, the projects down in South Bojor was, was one that we've got Water Sector funding for. We were, we were able to, um, qualify for consolidation with the trailer park that was out there. We are working on a sewer Water Sector Program Grant. We've applied for it before, we're gonna go ahead and put in again. It does not have a consolidating component to it, so it's not gonna sing as well as some others. But you recall, that one's connected to a DEQ loan that we're working through, and we're very close on that. We've been going back and forth, my team has, with the Finance Department to get the financing.
That's the Norman?
That's the Shady Grove.
Shady Grove, okay.
And that's the one we'll be, we'll be applying for, um, Water Sector Program funding for. It's a very needed project. We've got a funding mechanism for that. The plans are done. We've got some property acquisition and some other odds and ends there. It'll need to go before the bond commission. Um, and I know that's something that everyone loves to do, so we've been careful with that. But it's very needed. That, that.
Yeah, it's very, very needed.
That will, that's probably, of the sewer challenges in South Bojor, that's it. That one will, will eliminate those problems we have over there.
Councilman Smith hasn't had the privilege yet of dealing with that yet.
It's coming. Ice storm brewing.
When, when that problem arises.
It's coming.
So, um, yeah, it's very, very much needed, very much needed. Um, does anybody have anything else, Mr. Roshenbach?
Tell the guys, good job.
Yeah, thank you very much, Ben.
Little bit of information I wanted to, um...
I'm sorry, I think your three minutes are up.
All right, well, I'll, um, they, the, when we talked about Hamilton Road, the, uh, crossing was replaced about five years ago, and at that time, they did widen it enough to potentially add a lane. And so that, that's been, um, I guess that works.
We were talking about, actually, we were talking about that earlier, and we did not, I mean, so when they put the new trestle in, they did do it wide enough that we could have a turn-in lane?
Potentially, yes. At least one. So, yes.
All right. We didn't know if it was wide enough or not. Um, is Mr. Rich here? Wait, wait here. Everybody's pointing at you back there. I didn't get you off the deer stand, did I? Okay.
You were hard to see in that camera.
Yeah, you're hiding back to camouflage. Um, I just got one, one quick for you. Is there any more panel replacement scheduled for Hamilton Road?
Not at this time.
Not at this time?
No, I backed off. Anything on there, we're just patching potholes as they arrive.
All right, so, okay, all right. All right, that's, did y'all, y'all have anything?
I just wanted to publicly thank you and your team for the ditch work and the mowing that you're doing. Uh, the Shady Grove ditch looks better than it's looked in years.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Anything, Council?
Yeah, that, that was it. I guess I could've just asked you that over the phone, but I just wanted to see you. Um, oh, I know there is one more. Um, city, with the citywide street and sidewalk improvements, are we, what, what phase, what phase are you in now?
Where? The additional money that was just approved.
Yeah, the three hundred thousand?
Yeah, that's, uh, sixty-something percent of that is going to extend this contract we have going on now.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll, we'll just keep that going, and hopefully that'll, that'll get us closer to when our new project, two thousand twenty-six bids, probably February.
Okay.
So we're just gonna continue doing what we're doing in all the places we have identified throughout the city.
All right, perfect. All right, anybody else have anything for Wade? All right, thank you, Wade. Um, I guess the next thing up, we can kind of do an update on the, um, the council chamber upgrades. Um, after, um, our December, the, is it December thirtieth?
Sixteenth.
Oh, after the December sixteenth council meeting, that will be the last, um, the last meeting that we will have in these chambers until the project is complete in April. Um, they will be able to, um, go ahead and come in and start some of their demo work and stuff like that, and then the full project will start, um, January five. I know that we have moved forward. Um, all contracts are signed. Um, stuff has already been ordered. Um, we're looking forward to getting it done, getting it upgraded. The, um, audiovisual systems will be upgraded. Um, the sound, um, we'll have TVs on both sides for people to see what is going on, um, here in the council chambers. Just kind of, um, kind of bringing it up to date with everything, because a lot more people do watch this, um, at home being livestreamed. So, um, we're, we're looking forward to that. Um, I think everybody except Phyllis and Emily are looking forward to that because everything has to be moved out. So, um, at a later time, we will, um, I guess, tell the public where we will be having our council meetings, unless Mr. Smith wants to come up. Does he have any info on that?
To be determined.
To be determined, okay. We may be in the parking lot meeting, we don't know yet, but, um, we will have meetings.
We'll always take volunteers to help us move.
Yeah, we move everything out, move it back in, so, um, that is, um, that is good. Um, Andy, do have one more thing for you, um, moving forward with infrastructure. Um, our secure parking lot expansion?
Yes, um, I believe I sent an email, uh, trying to fit, hammer down on the scope. Um, did you get a chance to?
Um, yeah, I, I have kind, I have kind of looked at that. Um, just going by the picture, I know that it's basically just adding two more parking spots um, right out here. I think it'd be a very quick and very, um, minor expense um, to do that with, um, just including that in here with our, um, with our chamber upgrades, um, for those. So, um, I know that we will bring that to the full council and then get you, once you get a surprise on that, um, to just move ahead with that project.
Sounds good.
So at least we have it in place by the time we move back in here, um, in April.
Okay.
On, on that end.
Good deal.
All right. Does anybody have anything else that you'd like to talk about on the infrastructure for the City of Bojor? Any administration, anybody have anything? Carlotta? Marshall?
I do have a wishlist to add. Can, can I get a left-turn lane out of Shady Grove?
Good luck. Good luck. I've been trying for four years. Hopefully you can get it done. It, it is, it is needed, though.
It's bad.
For sure.
Depending on the time of day.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything, any other council member that's here? Would y'all have anything that y'all wanted to, to bring to this committee today? Going once? No, sir, we're not taking public comment today. I, I do apologize that you can get with your, um, your representative for your district, your, your councilwoman or man, um, and then they can bring that, um, bring that to us. Do you know who your council, um, council?
Actually, I'm from Shreveport.
Oh, okay.
I'm at Shreveport, but I lived in Bojor City all my life. There was some things that I was concerned about here in Bojor City that hadn't got taken care of for some time now.
Yes, sir, that, that would just be, if you, or if you want to email the, um, the city clerk, um, she can bring that to the council. Yes, sir, this is just basically an infrastructure committee meeting about projects that are, um, going on or will be taking place, um, in the City of Bojor.
So there is an infrastructure project for Hamilton Road?
Ma'am?
So there is a, uh, infrastructure project?
Yes, ma'am, it, it is, it is on the books. Yes, ma'am, it, it, yes, ma'am, it is. Yes, ma'am.
Just to have it because this is the times that you take questions from the public.
Uh, we, we do it at our council meeting. Um, well, I, I'll tell you what, I mean, if that... Do y'all have a problem?
I don't.
I, I don't have a problem. You come on up and ask it.
I think we...
You, you just come up here to the microphone.
I think you've addressed it, the, uh...
Can you come right up here?
Yes, I can come up here, but I think it has been addressed.
If you can, just when you come up, just take your, your name and address for us.
Okay, my name is Willie Mae Blackshire, and, uh, Mr. Maggio is my representative.
Okay.
But we do attend church, and it has already been addressed about the, um, turning, uh, signal on the light off of Hamilton and East Texas.
Yes, ma'am.
As you've already stated, there, the light changes about four or five times before, you know, and you have to go around and come in to the church another way. And also, um, I don't think the sidewalks, you know, have been addressed, but we'll talk about that another time.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. All of that, um, that, hopefully, the, the light situation will be expedited, and we can get that taken care of because there is a whole lot more traffic now right there at that intersection. And I know that we met with, um, we met with the pastor of the church the other day, and I know that it, it is causing a problem, um, right there along with every, everybody else in Bojor City that comes through that intersection now. So, yes, ma'am, we, we are hoping to, um, expedite that project.
And Mr. Cochran had said about the yellow light caution. I don't know what could be done to explain it a little bit better, because when I approached it, I didn't understand, you know, and how people out there, you know, it's real good, but maybe we can explain it a little bit more.
Yes, ma'am, maybe we'll get Mr. Johnson to put out a, a public service announcement about if it's a yellow, if it's yellow and flashing, if there's no oncoming traffic, you can turn.
Okay, that's good. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much for coming.
Ma'am, what was your name again?
Uh, Willie Mae Blackshire.
Okay, thank you.
All right, y'all have anything else? Yeah, would you like to come up? You come up. I'll, I'll let her, so I'm gonna let you, even though you live in Shreveport, I'm gonna let you talk.
I just recently moved to...
Oh, okay, well, come on back to Bojor.
Why?
I just recently moved to...
Yeah, could you just state your name and address for us?
Michael Snee, Michael Snee. Michael Snee.
All right, go ahead.
Now, what I was concerned about, I, uh, just, just beyond, uh, Carlquit Street and just, just a little bit going off on, uh, Hamilton right beyond Scott Street. Uh, I think this gentleman here made mention of it right here. He said that, that there wasn't any, any orders or anything that was gonna be done. It's recently, nothing had been put in to get some work, uh, did right there under the underpass where they got a whole bunch of potholes, a whole bunch of potholes. And, uh, another guy made mention of the, the, uh, potholes and stuff that they, coming off of I twenty going back north, that they was planning on doing some work there. But the main work, I think, that need to be done is beyond Carlquit and just beyond Scott Street. This is, it has been used all of the time. I'm a church member of any of y'all Baptist church here in Bojor. So I'm constantly using that, 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 that street, and a lot of other people is too, because Bojor Baptist Church, Mount Nebo, and any of y'all Baptist church, Stonewall Baptist church. So it's lots of traffic going down this street, especially on Sunday. And just, just right there under the overpass, uh, they just did work there. They just did work there. But it's constantly a grid, big pothole in a section right there just beyond, on the pass there, and on the other side, on the other side of the...
Yeah, I, I know, I know exactly where you're talking about.
Right, so I spoke with a gentleman, uh, just, uh, I think it was last week, uh, uh, we had the meeting over there, and, uh, and he said that there was some work that was gonna be done over there, but he couldn't give me any definite, you know, time that it was gonna be done. But it seemed like he just said that it wasn't anything, uh, it was been set out.
Well, but what, what he was saying was, there is no plans right now to come in and do complete panel repair when we are looking, replacement, when we are looking at redoing the entire roadway there of Hamilton Road. Um, if there, if a pothole occurs, um, either hot mix or cold mix will be put in there to take care of the pothole at that time. But right now, until we move a little bit further along with what we are gonna do with that street, um, we won't be coming in there replacing any panels right now.
Do you have any idea what you might be doing?
Well, we, we just brought this up. I mean, it's a, um, it's an almost seven-million-dollar project. So, yeah, we've got to, we've got to look at it, see where we're gonna get the funding, if we're gonna get any state help on that, and then get the drawings done up, and then move forward with the project one way. And then get the drawings done up and then move forward with the project one way or the other.
Right.
Um, it's not, I, I, I hate, everybody always um, thinks that, you know, it's not gonna happen overnight. I, I'm, I'm gonna tell you that. But what will happen overnight is if we do have a pothole or something like that, or it may be a panel that has sunk that it, it may take, doing a complete panel replacement in order to get the, get that taken care of. I know that they um, met with Ms. Ross the other day over in her district and that was one of her big concerns were the streets over in the Scott Street, Green Street, Butler Street, all in those areas um, that, that do need um, some, some TLC on those streets.
Yeah, for the last twenty, for the last twenty years, I think it's been, needed that.
Yes, sir. Well, that, that, um, that area now has got a councilwoman that I can assure you is working for her district.
Yeah.
Um, so she is out there doing it. It's just now, um, you know, like anything, us finding the money and seeing how much money that we can, that we can put towards a project and um, start getting all that stuff taken care of.
Well, I really appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you. Alright, anybody else? Alright, if nobody-
I just had a question about it.
Yes, ma'am, if you could please just come up to the microphone.
If you, and I'm, I'm Janice Sneed and I represent um, Antioch Baptist Church, that's our church.
Uh huh.
I'm also a member of the uh, MCDC board, which is affiliated with Stonewall Baptist Church.
Okay.
And so we've been planning to come to this meeting and just kind of talk about the streets. The project that you're doing for Hamilton Road, would it allow you to do some of the side streets and all of that in the sidewalk as well?
Uh, well, the, the side streets and the sidewalk, that would fall under the citywide street repair. Every council member of the five districts gets two hundred thousand dollars a year for projects in their district. So that would fall under um, Ms. Ross in her district. And what, when she sits down with the engineering department and talks about that, the best thing that y'all could do is relate to her in that district, which streets y'all feel need the most attention.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Alright, if nobody has anything else, meeting adjourned.